Good evening and welcome to the June 7, 2016 Planning and Zoning Board Meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence?
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, to the stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the objective of justice for all.
Can I have roll call from my left, please?
Richard Lutz.
Mike Dolan.
John Grant.
Carl S. Moore.
Scott Marlowe.
Jim Quish.
I'm Edward Mead. Also tonight we have David Selkis, City Planner, and Board Clerk Phyllis Leggett. First item on our agenda for this evening is executive session for 1613 New Haven Avenue, Seabou Cove. Discussion of Pending Litigation. Could I have a motion to go into executive session, please? Jim Quish, second. Mike Dolan. I would also like to invite David Selkis and City Attorney Matt Woods, please. Could I have a motion to come out of executive session, please? Scott Marlowe, second. Richard Lutz. Out of executive session. First up on the agenda is...
Eight twenty-four.
Eight twenty-four, forty-four, sixty-four, River Street. Approval of lease agreement with Connecticut State Statues eight dash twenty-four between the city of Milford and Susan Hassan. Mr. Selkis, anything on that?
Whatever we have in the file, whatever was given to you. So hold on one second. Okay, as you may recall, the city, I believe, purchased this property. This is, I believe, the Agro property. And there's a lease before you for a tenant in it. And because the city owns it, you have to approve the lease.
This is the property where they're putting in the new parking lot by the train station?
It hasn't been determined yet what the ultimate use of the city-owned parcels are going to be, but in the meantime, we do have a commercial building that the city does own, that we do manage and are responsible for.
Thank you. Does no one else hear from the city? Is there any questions from the board to Mr. Selkis on this?
I have a question.
Some more.
Is there something we approved this evening that will go to the Board of Alderman? Or is it something that we just approved this evening and then decided off?
In eight twenty-four, you're approving it, and then it goes to the Board of Alderman. If you deny it, it still goes to the Board of Alderman, but their vote will be different if you have a denial.
Do we have a motion on this application? Mr. Quish?
I would move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor of the eight forty-four, sixty-four, River Street approval for a lease agreement? Say aye. Any opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you. Second on the list is six twenty-five through six fifty-five Twin Oaks Terrace, request by Connecticut General Statue eight dash twenty-four abandonment of a portion of Twin Oaks Terrace to construct a cul-de-sac at six twenty-five, six fifty-five Bridgeport Avenue. Mr. Macaluso.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Raymond A. Macaluso. I'm the owner of Westcott Mapes with offices at one forty-two Temple Street in New Haven. And I'm here on behalf of Sanford Realty, who are the owners of Chevrolet Milford. They own both pieces of property, six twenty-five and six fifty-five Bridgeport Avenue. I was in before you back in September fifteenth for a approval of the property that was known as the Knights of Columbus Building. They purchased that, and we received the site plan approval to put vehicles there. The owners now would like to abandon a portion of Twin Oaks Terrace, combine the two lots, and then build the cul-de-sac with all the amenities. And I'll go through the... show you on the maps. This is the existing conditions. Right now, as we have both pieces of property that are owned by Sanford Realty, Chevrolet Milford, and this was the old Knights of Columbus, and it's been demolished, and the vehicles are parked there, as you know. Before we come in for a complete site plan approval, we're requesting the abandonment of a portion of Twin Oaks. That abandonment would be this portion right here, and then a cul-de-sac would be constructed. All the departments are in favor of it. DOT is very in favor of it, because we only have in one curb cut now. We're also providing eleven-on-street parking spaces that has been approved by the Police Department, because there's so much activity and parking on the street that the residents felt that if they had specific spaces for everybody to use, including the restaurant, the property owners, then it would probably take a lot of the excess traffic off their road. There's been a lot of complaints. All the property owners have signed off in your package. You'll see that every property owner on Twin Oaks has signed off and is very much in favor of this project. There will be no cost to the city. Everything would be done by Sanford Realty. And we would have... once your approval, we'd have to go to the Board of Alderman for the approval, and then we would come back to you for a complete site plan. What we would do is then establish all the easements for the sanitary. There's a sanitary sewer. There's also... DOT has an easement, which we already talked to DOT, that Chevrolet Milford would enter in with DOT for a lease agreement like they did on this property over here. So all the improvements, again, would be no cost to the city. They would build a sidewalk going around the cul-de-sac, all the way around. And again, we met with the neighbors. Neighbors are very much in favor. There will be a buffer, which they requested a berm with our provides. So all the things that they had requested, Chevrolet Milford will be doing all that. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Macaluso. Anything from staff on this?
None at this time.
Any questions from the board? Some more?
Can you speak to the emergency vehicles' entrance and exits?
The emergency vehicle in your file has all been approved by the Fire Department. So you have the Fire Department, Police Department have approved it. The cul-de-sac is designed to accommodate all of the apparatus for swinging around. So there's... that's something that they approved, both Fire and Police.
Is there any other questions? Seeing none, would somebody like to make a motion on this? Mr. Quish?
I'd make a motion to approve as presented.
Second. John Grant, second. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you, Mr. Macaluso.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. I got the next one, too.
Next on the new business is five sixty-five Vic Drive, Zone HDD, petition of Ray Macaluso for coastal area management site plan review. And site plan review approval to configure the entrance gate area to modify the entrance drive at plant number five of Vic Consumer Production Product Manufacturing Company, located on map zero five one, block nine three six Y, parcel one, in the HDD zone of which Vic Consumer Products Manufacturing Company is the owner.
Thank you, Chairman Mead. For the record, Raymond A. Macaluso, president and owner of Westcott Mapes Consulting Engineer is located at one forty-two Temple Street in New Haven. The purpose of this project is to separate the delivery truck access from the employee automobile access and to provide increased site security with the use of card swipe access and a guardhouse checkpoint access with control gates and double swing gates. You're looking at existing conditions. Right now, you can see that you have the ingress and egress on this area, and there's a little guard shack right over here, and there's no gates that control the area and the security to go in and out. Vic Consumer Products would like to... this is where the lighters are manufactured, over in five sixty-five Vic. So what they'd like to do is they'd like more security, more access for truck delivery and more security. What we're proposing... and again, you have all the plans. What we're proposing is to have two entrances, one for the employees, and it would be a key-card access with the gate, and then this would be a delivery access. And here's the guardhouse, and then the trucks would come in and check in with the guardhouse. There are two gates here, and then go on to the property. Then leaving, the trucks would then depart and either head down Vic Drive or up Vic Drive, whatever the case may be. So we're improving the entrance to make it larger, to make it more safe for the vehicles to come in, for the eighteen-wheelers and the box trucks, and especially for the employees, because then they could come in and just go through the key-card access with no problem at all, without any backup. Again, in the file, all the departments have approved this plan and all the plans that have been submitted. And it's pretty straightforward. It's just an improvement to the access drive for the Vic Consumer Products. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you again, Mr. Macaluso. Anything from staff on this application?
None at this time.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Quish?
To staff, I just don't really understand why this is in front of us.
Because it's a change to an already-existing site plan that this board has approved.
Thank you.
Grant?
I have a question. What's the stacking ratio because of the gate? If I'm an employee coming in, I'm putting my card in the gate, and there's people behind me, how many backup is there allotted for?
Ten.
What about for tractor-trailers? Is Vic Drive going to be restriped for...
No, the PD and everybody had no objections to our plan and no other improvements.
Because my only concern would be if cars are on the right-hand side of the road and then tractor-trailers are on the left side of them, there's no designated lane for them to be in?
There is.
On the road itself?
On the road itself? No. No, we're not widening the road at all. We're not restriping it. Yeah, Vic Drive is going to remain. The whole... again, the purpose of the employees will go a lot quicker, because it's key-card access in lieu of stacking. The tractor-trailers, I don't believe they have more than two, one or two at a time. It's not going to be that it's... you're going to have a queuing out on Vic Drive.
Okay.
There hasn't been a problem now, or any complaints that I know of.
So this would leave the cars and the trucks in one lane going?
That is correct. So you're separating the cars and the delivery trucks.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Anybody would like to make a motion on this application? Mr. Grant?
I'd make a motion to approve the site plan as presented for five sixty-five Vic Drive.
Second, Mr. Marlowe. All in favor of the application? Aye. Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Next on the agenda is twelve Bittersweet Avenue, Zone R five, petition of Cheryl Lacada for coastal management site plan review approval to construct a single-family residence on map thirteen, block one thirty-four, parcel one, of which Cheryl Lacady is the owner. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Cheryl Lacady, owner of Twelve Bittersweet. I applied for a building permit back in the fall for this property to raise and renovate it. And I received the building permit the first week of January. And then we waited until March to start the renovations, but then we found, once we started opening up the house, that the damage was too great. And we were told by our consultants that it should be demolished. So I'm here for a site plan CAM review in order to demolish the existing house, but use the same plans and build the same exact house that we have the building permits for already. So we're just going to build the same house that we have plans for, just everything's going to be new instead of renovating it. And we're actually going to reduce the impervious surface slightly from the existing conditions, because we're going from a two-car asphalt driveway to just a one-car garage with pavers. And that's all.
Any report from staff on this application?
Steve Harris did the CAM review, and he had no issues. Basically, staff recommends approval in accordance with the submitted plans and comments by engineering and public works.
Any questions from the board on this application? Seems that you started renovating the first house, and it was more damage than you thought, and then you just want to redo it on the same footprint?
Yes, same footprint.
Anyone would like to make a motion on this application? Mr. Quish?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Dolan. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Ayes have it. Next is a public hearing. Two forty North Duck Avenue, Zone CDD two, petition of David Sell for special permit approval to change the use from a restaurant to a private club for the Knights of Columbus on map fifteen, block fifty-four, parcel two zero eight six, of which Santy Falcini the Second and Rosemary Falcini are the owners.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is David Sell. I'm a... sorry. Is that better? How about if I just get lower? There we go. Thank you. We're here representing the MKC Club, which is the business end of the Knights of Columbus, Tinto Council forty-seven. We're seeking to have the permitted use at two forty North Duck Avenue, which is currently Aldario's Restaurant, to include a private club. We're also seeking to retain the parking adequacy already afforded at that location. We've received approvals from Fire, Sewer, Engineering Departments, as well as Public Works. We're not looking to make any changes to the building, just the permitted use.
Any words from staff on this application?
You have my report. If you have any questions about it, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Since this is a public hearing, I'll read the... is there anyone here in favor or opposed of this application first? All right, seeing none. Is there any questions from the board? A change of use from a public restaurant to a private club? Anyone would like to make a motion on it?
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, David, sorry.
Yeah. You have to... if you have to close the public hearing before you move on to handle...
Since we see no... anyone for or against from the public, we'll close the public hearing. At this time, we'll open up to the board for questions.
I just wanted to just check. When I was reading through for the hours of operation, some of them seemed to be going a little late into the night, and I didn't know. How often do you see that? And I also saw that you weren't going to necessarily rent out the hall within that with what I saw anyway. Is that going to be the case, or are you going to rent out?
No, we can't, like, different from our old location. Our liquor permit will cover the entire building. Therefore, the use will be for members and guests only.
Any other questions? Seeing none, would anybody like to make a motion on this application? Mr. Dolan?
Make a motion to approve as presented.
Second, Mr. Quish? Next for public hearing is twenty-three Caroline Drive, Zone R five, petition of Martinez Coach Associates for special permit coastal management site plan review approval to construct a single-family residence within twenty-five feet of High Tide on map twenty-seven, block four four eight, parcel twelve and twelve A, of which Jennifer Wendy Sapri...
Sapphire.
Sapphire is the owner.
I'll start while we're putting the easel up. My name is Richard Couch, Principal with Martinez Couch and Associates with offices at ten eighty-four Cromwell Avenue in Rocky Hill. And we're here presenting Twenty-three Caroline Street. It's a home that has been impacted by both Storm Irene and Sandy. The owner has been accepted into the Department of Housing's HUD Superstorm Sandy CDBG Grant Program. And the design for the house is to demolish the house. It's beyond recovery. To drive timber piers, timber piles, and to construct a new home. The new home will be approximately fourteen feet above existing grade, same footprint. There'll be a reduction in gross coverage of the lot area. The plans have been submitted to the DEEP and to city staff. We had initial comments, and we've addressed all of the comments on the plans, including the introduction of rain gardens. And we maintain the separation distance where the tidal wetland goes around the... pretty much around the outside of the lot. And the elevation on the lot is around about elevation three. And you can see that on the site plans themselves and on the survey. So it's to construct a home of very similar size, fourteen feet higher in elevation on piers, parking under house, reduction in impervious area. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any questions? Words from staff on this?
Yeah, Steve Harris reviewed this, and staff recommends approval in accordance with the submitted plans and comments by engineering, public works, DEEP, and inland wetlands.
Could I just make one comment? The owner, Wendy Sapri, is actually here tonight, so if there was a question for the owner, Wendy is present.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, if there's anyone here that would like to speak for or against this, I would like to read the... welcome to the public hearing of the Milford Planning and Zoning Board. We're glad that you're here, and we hope to benefit from your input. We ask that you... that's it.
That's it.
Is that it?
There is.
That's enough.
You never listen before.
Yeah. The following procedures will be followed when presenting your comments. Approach the podium clearly, state your name and address, spell your name, address all comments of the commission. If your comments have been previously presented, please refrain from repeating rather than stating that you are in agreement with them. Say your comments as clear and concise manner as possible. Keep your comments to three minutes. So is anyone here in favor? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Saaz Agray, and I live at fifteen Caroline Street. And I'm very much in favor of seeing Wendy back in her house, in a new house, an elevated house. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor? Seeing none? Anyone opposed? All right, we'll close the public hearing on this application. And any questions from the board? Seeing none? Would anyone like to make a motion on this application? Mr. Quish?
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second, Mr. Grant? All in favor of the application? Aye. Anyone opposed? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Our third public hearing is seventy-four Melba Street, Zone R five, petition of Chris Bjorken for special permit and coastal management site plan review approval to construct a single-family residence within twenty-five feet of High Tide on map twenty-nine, block five fifty-eight, parcel thirty-five, of which Turnkey Renovations LLC is the owner.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Bjorkland, and I'm here before you with regards to seventy-four Melba Street for a special permit and a coastal management site review approval. The ultimate goal this evening is to construct a single-family residence on the existing foundation in the same location, which is about twenty-five feet from the High Tide I would like to take a second before I start and just thank your review and your consideration, as well as everyone in City Hall, Phyllis, and everyone that's met with me for my counter meetings and my formal meetings. I promise I will make my presentation clear and concise, but thank you. If you would like, I can review or discuss any points in the CAM report. I can also discuss any questions about the special permit. I have a few visual aids to assist. You have everything on the easel in front of you as well. In addition, I can also address the recommendation made from Gregory Pidlaski with his comments as well. In April of two thousand and fifteen, the property at Melba Street had a fire. There was three homes that were burned. This lot is the middle lot. The city demolished the property. We did have engineers come through, and they did multiple tests and determined that the existing foundation and footprint could be reused to rebuild. So we're here this evening to take that next step. The coastal area management plan states on multiple pages that there's no potential adverse impacts, or that anything's been identified for the project. The CAM is obviously required from five point twelve, because we're within a hundred feet of the coastal resources. The CAM was prepared by Cabazus and De Angelis Engineering Firm, and there was a past precedent set in nineteen ninety, the house that was there before that burned down, which had an approved CAM. And they also had a past precedent for the special permit. I also went above and beyond and spoke with Mary Rose Palumbo to make sure that there was no concerns with our wetlands. And we had soil scientists done. We had two different engineering consultants there to look at the soil as well. With regards to the special permit, if you look at the site plan, there's portions of the back of the property that are between twenty-three and twenty-eight feet. There was some discussion whether we needed it or not. I erred on the side of caution. I aired on the side of caution and we decided to move forward with it and that was also at the recommendation of Stephen Harris as well. Again, with the coastal area management plan and the special permit, just, you know, the compelling point was that it was a past precedent in nineteen eighty-nine and nineteen ninety. The construction plans are on the lower level. It'll be an elevated house, very much like everything that's in the area. We will use the existing foundation and footprint. It will be in the exact same size. There will be no variances. There'll be no change. There is city water, city sewer, and gas, all there now. The engineering plans, we actually consulted with a structural engineer and a physical engineer to make sure that that foundation could handle the elevated structure and the new wind loads. Those are in your package as well, in the prints as well. The last thing I wanted to address was the engineering memo from Gregory Pidlasky who said that he recommended approval of the application barring a final determination with regards to the curbs, the sidewalks, and the driveway apron. And we're happy to address that if that's what you'd like to do, to approve that this evening. So basically, if you had any thoughts, any questions or any concerns, I'm happy to address them. But the cam was pretty straightforward, that there was no adverse impacts. You know, the past precedent was there for the special permit. What we want to do is proposed, or what we want to do is consistent with the adjacent parcels in the vicinity. The plans, the drawings, everything was done the last six months in accordance with every office in the city with multiple meetings. And that included Gregory Pidlasky, Stephen Harris, Mary Rose, Joe Griffith, Dan Geriak. This has been a lengthy process. So we wanted to make sure that we put something quality before you this evening. All the taxes are current, there's no variances or anything required. The builder and the subcontractors have longstanding relationship with the city of Milford as well, so we would like very much to put the house back together after the fire. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anything from staff?
Steve Harris reviewed this and staff recommends approval in accordance with the submitted plans and comments by engineering and public works.
Thank you. Since this is a public hearing, is anyone here for or against this application? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. And any comments or questions from the board? Mr. Letts?
Was this the location for the single-family house that burned down or was it a multi-story house?
It's a, it's a single-family home.
It was a single-family home that was there before?
Yes.
How, how far away from the house to the east of this site will this house be? How much space will be in between?
This...
In fact, the other side.
It's a R5 zone, so the standard is at that five foot and ten foot. So it meets the apartment with no variance.
With no variance, okay.
And it's no barrier. And this wouldn't exist into a print that was there, so we're not going to negate the metal print.
You have to get on record. It should be on the mic. You can take the mic, would you, if you need to?
Okay, I apologize.
So the house is going to be built on the exact same footprint that was already there?
Exact same footprint. We're literally going to use the footings and foundations that are there.
The other thing I heard you mention that about, they asked you to put in sidewalks?
They did. So they mentioned the sidewalk, the apron, and the curbs, which we're happy to do if they'd like to be done.
Is there any other sidewalks on that side or do...
There's not on the parcels, left or right, so that's...
Any other questions from the board? Anybody like to make a motion on this application? Mr. Grant?
I'd make a motion to approve the site plan review and special permit for seventy-four Melba Street as presented.
Have a second? Mr. Quish? Do we have to add that, the recommendation of the sidewalks or can we leave it out?
The staff report again said that they recommend approval in accordance with the submitted plans and comments by the engineering and public works department. So if the engineering and public works department want to have sidewalks, then that will be an automatic requirement.
It's already in that?
Yeah, that would be one of the letters that would be referred to in the approval letter that would go out as a, as a condition of approval.
So we don't have to add that to the motion?
You don't need to add that, anyway.
All in favor of the motion? Aye. Anyone against? Eyes have it. Approve.
Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to old business. Proposed zoning regulation changes. Mr. Grant, anything on that?
Update on the proposed regulation for the marijuana dispensaries. The subcommittee has reviewed and is basically would recommend not to approve as presented. We are working with the city attorney's office and the board to put together a revised regulation. We have an existing regulation. What we're going to do is to strengthen it and by revising it. And at this particular point in time, we're still in, working it out.
So that mean, was there an extension added to this to help out?
Yeah, the applicant gave an extension. The public hearing is still open. It has to close by, it looks like July fourteenth. It could close by, you know, anytime between tonight and July fourteenth if the board wanted to close it tonight. That's up to you.
We're still waiting for...
The city attorney, we have a question into them, so we're waiting for them to answer it.
So at this time, we'll continue until we wait for the word from the attorney on this. Thank you, Mr. Grant. Any liaison reports? I have none. Regulation subcommittee update?
We have two regulations that we'll probably be presenting to the board next meeting.
Mr. Grant? Approval of minutes from five three twenty sixteen and five seven twenty sixteen. Five seventeen twenty sixteen. Have a motion to approve the minutes? Chair's report, I have none. Staff report? None this evening. Thank you, Mr. Sokas. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Quish, seconded by Mr. Dolan. We are adjourned. Thank you.